Good evening. Today is December the 8th, 2022. The time is now 6:30 PM and I'd like to call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everybody who's here in attendance tonight as well as those who are watching online. Director Connor, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin, I'd like to present this statement regarding the guidelines for supporting transgendered students. We understand that there's been a concern among some families about the guidelines we adopted on November the 17th for supporting transgendered and gender expansive students. I am hoping to provide some clarification and share some steps we're taking in response. First, one of the main concerns we've heard in these guidelines mean that we're going to start denying parents access to information about their children. This is not true. It is more accurate to say that district staff will provide information to parents about their students in almost all instances. The only exception to this, which is required by law, is when the student requests the information to be kept private and keeping the information private is in the best interests of that student. For example, if denying the parent access to information is needed to protect the child from physical or emotional harm. I want to say clearly that this is not a change from our existing policy or policies and is in the same at all the, all school districts and charter schools because it is required by law. These guidelines are about helping staff to ensure we provide a safe, welcoming environment for our transgendered students, just like we want to make sure our schools are safe and welcoming for students of all different races, religions, and backgrounds. We feel very strongly about partnering with families to support our students. We recognize and respect families are the primary system of support in the education of our, of a child and that's not going to change. As a district, we apologize for the confusion this has caused. We are planning to update the language to be more clear about our ongoing commitment to working with families. We appreciate parents' feedback and will always respect parents' and students' rights. Thank you. Now, moving to our meeting, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb.
Second.
Second by Director Said. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will now open the truth and taxation hearing portion of the board meeting. The purpose of the truth and taxation hearing is to present the following information: the current year budget and actual revenue and expenses for the prior year, the proposed property tax levy, the percentage of change over the prior year, specific purposes and reasons for which taxes are being increased, and to allow for public comments. Public comments will be heard after the budget and property tax presentation. We will be following the procedures outlined in Board Policy 206 of public hearings. Anyone wishing to address the board must have signed up prior to the start of the board meeting. There are signup sheets outside the door there. Speakers will have up to three minutes to share their comments, at which point the next speaker will begin. Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services and Ellers, will now share the budget and property tax presentation. Thank you, Stacy and Ellers.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the board. We are bringing to you tonight our presentation on the truth and taxation report as required by law. We have asked that Matt Hammer from Ellers, Ellers is our financial and municipal advisory company that works with the district, to walk through the intricacies of this truth and taxation this year for us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Matt.
Yeah, so thank you, Stacy. Nice to see everybody again. My name's Matthew Hammer and I'm, we work as the district's financial advisor and we've been doing a lot of these presentations this year with the lots of variations that are happening in districts' tax levies across the state of Minnesota for a number of reasons. So we're gonna walk through the district's budget and then spend a little bit of time on the district's current tax levy for Taxes Pable 23, the preliminary levy that the board will be looking at certifying later this evening. So with that, we can get started. And all municipalities in the state of Minnesota are required to have a truth and taxation hearing between November 25th and December 28th each year. And tonight, we're having that meeting here for the district. The two topics that are required to be discussed are the district's current budget as well as the annual tax levy. And every municipality or taxing jurisdiction is required to have a meeting such as this. So we're gonna spend a little bit of time just kind of giving you an overview of how school funding works in Minnesota, get oriented in that regard. I can spend a little bit of time, or Stacy can talk about the district's budget, and then we'll talk about the district's proposed levy for 23, and then they'll, we'll have any public comment afterwards. So really, the constitution of Minnesota really lays out that the legislator shall make sure through taxation or otherwise that there's a, education is secure through a uniform system of public education in Minnesota. And there's set out in many laws and statutes throughout the legislature how schools are funded through a combination of both state aid and, and local tax levies. We'll talk a little bit about this as we kind of roll forward, but overall, there's forty different formulas that go into calculating the district's annual revenue, some of them that are a combination of both state and local levies based on the, based on state law. The largest portion of the district's funding, you often hear about this on, on, every time the legislature gets together and starts talking, talking about funding for schools, is the basic education formula. And we have a slide as we move forward of kind of illustrating how this has lagged with inflation over time. And I think this slide gives you a good visual of how that formula has trended to inflation over the last two decades. And even more so when we look at the last two cycles as inflation has really hit these last two years. So the, the current formula is $6,863 per student. If that would have kept up with inflation, it would have been a little bit over $8,000 per student, so about $1,200 less than where it would have been if it would have just kept up with inflation. So that's about an 18% reduction in revenue over that period of time. The other thing that districts are, are having to deal with is what is often referred to as the cross subsidy. And for Burnsville School District, this is about $12 million a year that the district has to fund out of your general operations or basically subsidize for special education. By law, school districts are required to provide services for special education and it, I kind of equate it to, it'd be kind of like going to the restaurant, incurring a $20 meal and then walking out and just giving a $5 bill. That's in essence what's happening is districts are having to, in essence, subsidize out of their general fund about 50% of the costs of special, special education in their districts. So like I said, that annual cost for, for the Burnsville School District's about $12 million that is coming through the state, or the district's general fund on an annual basis. When you look at that number, the number in FY20 was $591 million and it's projected to be about a little bit over $860 million, or $806 million by FY25. The other piece that is unique to the tax levy is it doesn't, an increase in the tax levy doesn't necessarily correlate to an increase in revenue. Like we talked earlier, there's a lot of, number of formulas that are tied to both a state and local share, and those often are referred to as categorical revenues. And all of those formulas are determined in state law. And when levies are going up, it doesn't necessarily mean that the local revenue to the school district is going up at the same time. So it's an important piece to note as we kind of look at the levy as we move forward in the presentation. The other important thing to note is the district's levy right now is being estimated for actual revenue that the district will receive in fiscal year 23, 24. So right now, the preliminary estimate, the districts on a, on an annual basis are putting estimates together for two years out. So those initial estimates are set and required to be provided to MDE in September every year. That's when the district sets a proposed levy. Those, that information's then sent to the counties to calculate TNT statements or proposed levy for 2023, and then it'll be final, a final figured, or it'll be figured out finally when the final tax rates are calculated in March. But right now, we're talking about the Taxes Pable 23 levy, which will be fiscal year revenue 23, 24 for the school district. On the other municipalities, that's gonna align with their calendar year, so the 23 levy will actually be revenue for 23 for those, those municipalities' budgets. When we look at the budget information, there's several funds that make up the district's overall budget. This is a, an illustration of the district's FY21, '22 actuals and then projected FY22, '23 budget. The district's general fund makes up most of, most of where the revenue expenditures are, and then there's obviously the other non-major funds, Food Service, Community Service Fund, Debt Service Fund where the district makes its annual debt service payments, and then both the OPEB and the OPEB Debt Service Fund. When you look at that breakdown, the general fund makes up about 85.5% of the overall budget, followed by the other funds listed here. The, the revenue budget for the fiscal year 2020, 22, '23 is estimated, not quite $160 When we look at the general fund revenue budget itself, most of that revenue is coming through the state of Minnesota, about 65%. About 25% is coming through local dollars, including the local tax levy, and then about 10% is coming through the federal, federal revenue from the federal government. School districts are a people business, so this is a, a look at this district's general fund budget as a whole. About 70% of it is going to pay wages and benefits. Another major component is the purchase service component, which transportation is a major piece in that component of the budget, and then followed by smaller portions of supplies and then capital expenditures and other. From a program perspective, this just gives you kind of an illustration of how the program budget breaks out. Regular instruction, vocational instruction, special ed, so the classroom's getting most of the spending in the district. When we look at the district's levy, we're gonna take a look at it as it compares to 22, the 22 tax levy, and then where it's set up right now as we go into Taxes Pable 23 and the major reasons for the changes, and we'll dive into that. Most of it's a result of things that are going at an MDE that are kind of outside of the district's control as well as the, the district's voter-approved operating referendum that the voters had approved with an inflationary adjustment. So when we look at property taxes as a whole, that property tax statement that folks have will have multiple jurisdictions on it, the school district's portion will be a small portion in the middle of that overall levy. So there's multiple components to that levy that are important to take a look at. The county sends those bills out, obviously, every November, and then they'll be finalized when the taxpayers get their statements in March. This is just kind of an, this is an example of a, a statement. It's not necessarily related to Dakota or Scott County, but just gives you an illustration of what it looks like. Like we talked earlier, the school district's levies, there's forty different categories in all, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of analysis. Actually, that levy report that the districts get every year is over forty pages in length with calculations for not only the current year levy, but as you remember, we're, we're levying for revenues out two years out, so there's adjustments that happen after those final numbers come in on an, on an annual basis. So when we look at the overall process of, of what happens every year, the county assessor is gonna determine that market value. So this really, this illustration is, is the school district plays just a small role from the standpoint of what happens with the levy process. The county assessors are setting that market value on an annual basis. The legislatures, the legislature is setting the laws for how taxes are calculated from, in the district's case, there's two tax bases, a net tax capacity and referendum market value tax base. The county auditor then takes those and calculates taxes on an annual basis. The Department of Education provides those detailed calculations that the school district gets every September as part of the proposed levy process when those initial proposed levy is certified by the board. And now the school board is gonna be certifying the final levy this evening. So the county auditor then will take that information from the final certificates tonight and calculate final tax rates for spreading those levies here later, in early '23, and those final statements will come out in March. So this is just giving a, kind of a overview of, of the process again. So when we look at the district's levy now, or currently, from '22 to '23, the overall levy's up 18.5% in total, a little, a little bit more than $7.5 million. This gives you a breakdown of all the various categories of levy categories that are included in the overall annual levy for the school district. The top component was the voter-approved referendum that was passed, and it has an inflationary component to it that is set by the Department of Education every year. It's adjusted every year, and it was adjusted with, to account for the, the large growth in the Consumer Price Index or the inflationary factors that are hitting everybody right now currently. So that number for '21, '22 is up a little bit over 7% in total based on MDE's latest estimates. The other component within there is the, that you'll see that's up quite a bit is the long-term facilities maintenance program, and those are coordinated with the district's other capital levies and debt service levies, and we'll get to how that kind of plays through because you can see a reduction happening in the district's debt service levy down below. So the voter-approved referendum's up about a little bit over $2 million. This is largely driven by some stabilization in the district's enrollment as we're looking out to fiscal year 23, 24, but also it really, right now, as we're looking at the revenue here, MDE was finalizing that inflationary adjustment for fiscal year '21, '22, which trickles into the inflationary adjustments as we look at what the forecast is for '23, '24. So there's also adjustments that are happening to the forecast for fiscal years '22, '23, and '23, '24. So as you look at this number, this number looks large, but it is mostly as a result of those inflationary adjustments that are trickling through the formula that MDE set when they adjusted that formula last summer. And as we look at this number too, this will get adjusted at least two more times before it's finalized, so. The other category is the district's long-term facilities maintenance revenue in the general fund, that's up a little bit over $2 million. Burnsville's eligible to levy for annual health and safety expenditures through the program, and we coordinate these levies with your other district capital levies to make sure that component of your levy has a stable tax rate over time. And this is coordinated as we look at the overall valuation growth to make sure that tax rate is actually level or slightly decreasing with all those, that component of the district's levy. Prior year adjustments, this really is the stabilization of the district's enrollment. When we looked at your forecasts over time, your enrollment, based on those forecasts and the other levies, is up a little bit, which is causing positive adjustments from a, a revenue perspective in the, in all those levy categories. So not only the district's referent, our voter-per referendum, but most levies are calculated based on actual enrollment in the end, and as enrollment has stabilized and slightly increased from those projections, that revenue flows through as a, an adjustment as part of the levy process. The debt service fund, and specifically, we're looking at the, the district's debt excess. Districts are required to levy 105% of their annual debt service payments by law, and MDE has a calculation on an annual basis based on that calculation of the reduction that happens as part of that over levy in essence, assuming that the taxes are actually collected. So really, what that is meant to be there for is that if there was appeals or if people didn't pay their taxes, there was enough money in the debt service fund to make sure bondholders are paid for those payments. So this is a result of that over-collection that's happened, and now it's going back through the debt service fund, back to taxpayers as a levy reduction as, in the debt excess calc. So when we look at factors impacting individual property owners, this is, most years, when you, when you look at valuations, they're trending fairly uniform across from taxpayer to taxpayer. But what we're seeing statewide is that assessed values are up significantly for property owners, specifically residential property owners, and they're varying from property owner to property owner. So we're gonna spend just a little bit of time of kind of highlighting how that conceptually works in a school district's tax levy, or any tax levy for that matter, that's fairly static over time, or how the pie gets divided is how we're gonna kind of talk about it. So the district's levy, when we look at overall valuation growth, we're up about 20% from last year. So as you look at the tax base of the school district, that's divided in Dakota and Scott County, the overall tax base has grown by 20%. That trickles through into some of the equalization formulas, but also trickles through in the overall district's tax rate. So even with the 18.5% increase, overall tax rates for the district are actually fairly stable, but we'll, we'll show how that kind of flows through as we account for valuation changes as part of the four-year trend. So what's happening with each slice? So when we kind of think, when we think about the district's levy, if we think about it as, in this case, a pumpkin pie, I don't know, hopefully people like pumpkin pie, but if we think about it in that regard, the district's overall levy is a pie and it gets sliced based on how each individual property owner's component of that. And if, like, to really simplify it, if somebody's market value increases by more than the average, that person's probably gonna pay a little bit more of the pie this year than they would have in previous years. If your overall market value decreases less than the average, that property owner probably could pay a little bit less than the average. So we are seeing in districts where people's property value has went up, maybe 10%, but other property owners are outpacing that because their properties are going up 25% and their levies are flat or even declining, or that other, those other folks where their levy has went up considerably more is paying a bigger chunk of the pie in essence, right? So each property owner's gonna pay a portion, and that portion changes from year to year. The other factor that's playing into this is commercial property and apartments. Those types of property necessarily haven't grown as much as the residential property owner's valuations have, which means when you split the district's levy up, those commercial property owners aren't necessarily picking up as much now as the residential component of the district's tax base. So this is a simplistic way of looking at it, but if we take and we just assumed there was a property that was valued at $100,000, or two properties within the school district that were valued at $100,000 and they were paying $250 each in '22, if we look at that this year and property one, the orange property on top increases 10%, and the bottom property, the blue property in this illustration goes up 25%, you can see how that levy gets split a little bit differently. So property owners that were paying exactly the same thing in '22 would be paying a different subset or a different, or have a different chunk of the overall district levy or the pie this year. And this is more pronounced this year than we've probably seen it in decades from the standpoint of the changes that have happened with valuations at the county levels. And we're seeing it from, in your guys' case, there's a little bit of, some properties in Scott County, most of your properties are in Dakota County, but we're seeing assessors from both counties because assessors from Scott County not necessarily would be having the same changes that maybe an assessor in Dakota County would be treating property. So in some cases, we're seeing it even from county to county on, on how those splits are happening. So this looks at a trend of, a four-year trend of where taxes have been, and we start with taking valuation changes out of the picture. So this is the illustration, I'm just gonna go straight to the graph because I think this is easier than that, the chart. But if we look on the left here, that's a $250,000 residential property, and you can see if that property hadn't changed in value at all over that time, taxes would have been fairly consistent or even a little bit less than they were back in 2020 and 2021. And that'll play through in regards to how we look at this as with commercial and apartments as well. But I think when we look at the apartment, non-residential, and commercial industrial, this is probably a fairly good representation of how things are looking for those property owners this year because from what we've been talking with the counties, commercial property and apartments haven't necessarily went up as much as what we're seeing on the residential side. So you So you can see here, if we look at a $750,000-valued apartment, taxes are pretty close in total to where they would have been in 2021, now in 2023. When we look at a 19, or almost a 20% accumulated change in property value, the picture looks a little different. When you think of how a residential property is taxed, as the value goes up, you lose homestead exclusion, you lose other credits as part of that, and by default, you're going to be paying a little bit more on that property as the valuation goes up. So when we look at this trend, and we assume that that property's valued at $250,000 in '23, we back that up to a little bit more than $208,000 in 2020, and you can see that the trend and how taxes have trended over that time. So again, we're, if we go back to 2020, we were at about $937 on a $250,000, or $208,000 home at the time, and now, if that property would have trended in this way, assuming that it would have went up by about 3% in between '20 and '21, 3% in '21, '22, and about another 13% between '22 and '23, you'd be at a little bit over $1,000 on that $250,000 property. And this is all hypothetical, because each property owner's valuations are going to change from year to year, but it gives you kind of a hypothetical illustration if a property would have trended similar to this. The other thing that we like to point out, there's three refund programs that we're told by the Department of Revenue that are highly, and are utilized by taxpayers. The first one is called the Homestead Credit Refund Program, or it's often referred to as a circuit breaker program. This one's income-based and does have a limit, but the forms are filled out and are due every August for the previous taxes year, so August of next year will be when '23 will be due. The special property tax refund is a, is not income-based, it's, it's based on if your taxes go up by more than 12% in a year, you can be eligible for the special property tax refund, and that's a single year, an annual basis, you can qualify for that. And the last one's a deferral, so senior citizens that are over age 65 can qualify to, it's not, it's not a relief of your tax bill, but it allows you to spread it over a few years. So those are three programs that are important to take a look at, and there's a form called the M-1 PR Form that can be found on the Department of, Minnesota Department of Revenue's So with that, that's a summary of the district's levy for taxes payable '23, and now we can take any public comments that folks have.
Great. Thank you for this presentation and being able to share that depth of information to help our residents, as well as us as a board understand. Just a reminder, in order to receive public comment, you would have had to have signed up prior to the start of this meeting. We have had one person sign up, and so we open up for public comment, we have one person signed up, Martha Heisel. And you can come up to the podium.
My name is Martha Heisel, and I live in Burnsville. We've lived here for 38 years. I understand the allocation among, you know, different properties and the types. On our particular home, we had an increase in assessed value from 2022 to the propos, well, to the 2023 of 29.6%, and overall, taking all the taxes, not just the school portion, but looking at the bottom line, it was a 27.9% increase. And dollar-wise, it's $924 for us. That's a lot, and I'm just asking that, as school board members who care about the community and the schools, as do I, we had two sons who went through Burnsville High School several years ago already, do your best to try and keep the costs down, and I know it's hard. This is an exorbitant amount. I was glad to, you know, hear him say about the special property tax credit. I'm sure we'll be applying, you know, for that portion, because we would likely qualify for that with the increases we've seen. But I remember many years ago, I was a treasurer for a senior class party for one of our boys, and everybody wanted to spend, 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 and I felt like the real ogre in the whole group, because I kept saying to people, "We can't spend until we know we've got the money in, and you're going to know you're going to get the money because the taxpayers, we don't have the choice to pay." I mean, I suppose some people don't pay, but we pay properly each year. But try to do your best to hold down the costs. It'll help you, it'll help everybody, and, and yet still, we want to maintain a quality education in Burnsville, and I know that's a dichotomy that's hard to, to do, but as a taxpayer, as a person concerned about education in the community, I used to volunteer in the Burnsville schools a lot, I hope that she'll listen to that comment. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Great, thank you, we appreciate your, your comment. We've closed our truth and taxation hearing. So this concludes our truth and taxation hearing. We will now take a five-minute recess. We will now continue on with the information portion of our meeting. We will be hearing a report about the FY '24 preliminary budget current reality with Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Chair Chester, and members of the board. Tonight, the board will take action on certifying the levy payable in 2023 as part of our fiscal year '24 budget development. So we have begun the season to prepare for next year's budget. So tonight, we will share preliminary information regarding revenues and expenditures, and I emphasize that this is preliminary, because as you know, the bulk of our funding is allocated by the state. The Minnesota Legislature convenes on January 3, 2023, and Governor Walz must submit his budget by the 4th, it says Tuesday of January, but I think it's Thursday of January. In addition to state funding, we will continue to make use of the remaining ESER federal funds. The approach for developing my recommendation that will come to you, so you can adopt the budget as required by June, for the fiscal year '24 schools, uh, school session, will focus on sustainability, stabilizing enrollment, as you heard from the previous presentation, we are starting to stabilize enrollment, and to manage revenues with increasing costs. Similar to our state, I am hoping that we develop a budget that reflects our expenditures not only for the one year, but a look at the next year, so a two-year period, and continue funding what we value. Through this process, I will look to bring recommendations that continue to fund our priority investments in pathways pre-K-12, support for achievement and integration goals, our equity plan, and our strategic roadmap that has been approved by the Board of Education, which includes our mission and core values and strategic directions. These areas will affirm our priority to continue down the path we've created when it comes to instruction, programming, and services for our students. We want to continue to expand our pathways model so that it reaches from pre-K all the way to graduation. Continue to invest in early learning, specifically having voluntary pre-K at each elementary school. Continue to focus on meeting the personalized needs of our students. We want to maintain the board-set class size averages and targets. Continue to pursue equity and work toward becoming a culturally proficient school system. And lastly, we want to support, continue to support student mental health and overall Similar to previous budget development, we have some driving questions to keep staff focused on, a recommendation that will come to the board. Is my mic not on?
I'm wondering if your mic's on.
Oh, it's not on?
Well, your light's on.
The light's on.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me, everyone.
Oh.
Did he come in? Can you hear me? Okay.
Well, tap on your mic.
So given our strategic roadmap requires that the district optimize resources for student learning, how will the budget for fiscal year '24 continue to support our mission, priorities, and leverage every funding source available? How will it align with the goals of advancing equitable student outcomes and the district's strategic directions? So we still have very similar goals with one change. I hope to submit a structurally sustainable and effective budget, in addition to being good taxpayer, good stewards of taxpayer dollars, aligned to the strategic roadmap, comply, comply with all statutory uses of funds, include our constituents' perspectives and input throughout the budget process, be transparent about the district's current and projected finances, budget processes, and budget decision-making, and increase my staff's cross-departmental collaboration. And with that, Executive Director of Administrative Services, Stacy Silvine, will give you preliminary information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. That was very thorough, and I don't have a whole lot left to share. Just one of the things to know, that as we're coming up on the legislative session for this spring here, starting up shortly, there are a few different areas that we will be keeping a close eye on. The current allocation, as, as Matt had referred to earlier, is $6,863 per pupil as the base for our general fund. That is for, through our FY '23, so through our current budget. We don't know what the number is going to be going forward. I don't expect that to back up, but I don't know what exactly it will increase either. That is for folks that will be taking office here shortly. Also, we will be focusing, keeping a special eye on our English learner cross-subsidy, as well as special education. Matt also referred that close to $12 million a year is being spent out of the general fund, it's a cross-subsidy just for special ed. English learning isn't quite as significant, but it still is in the million-dollar range, over a million dollars for that. There is a aid that is out there through '24 and '25, but that is about $2 million, or roughly $45,000 for the district, which is roughly about half an FTE in comparison to the 42 FTEs that we have right now for our EL program. Also, we are keeping an eye on early education. This is our VPK programming. The state has allocated about 4,000 seats statewide. We have an allocation of 325. We are hoping to continue to increase that number, but not only increase that number, increase that number at the sites in which we need it. So that's one of the things that we're running into, is we have a waiting list at a building that has capacity, but the state hasn't approved more seats for that site. We actually have them in different locations, so we're, we're going to try to work with the state as we move forward to get this aligned a little bit better. One of the things that we're hoping for in the long run is that our VPK programming will be at the sites that will feed into our kindergarten enrollment, because during our enrollment numbers, as we talked, we dropped off of our, what used to be pretty stable around 600 stable around 650, and we're closer to 585, 590 right now. So that was a 60-student decrease, decline from previous years on what that averaged. So we really want to try to, our VPK program has been very successful. We want to use that to attract and then build into our different locations as well. We did talk a little bit about our local levies. I'm not going to go into that. Compensatory funding for this year is very, pretty much flat from what we received last year, around 7.1 million. We do expect an increase for FY23 above that, but the numbers still are preliminary. And I'm sorry, a lot of numbers are still preliminary, and I'll just be forthright with that. We have estimates, but we, come January, we're going to be doing two things at the same time here. We're going to be trying to dial in those numbers for our projected budget for FY24, while we'll be stepping back and doing our revised budget portion for FY23. So our departments will be doing a couple of different things at the same time, and we'll be bringing that information forward. Did provide a chart for you. I'm sorry, we don't have it for the PowerPoint. It does reflect what our actual results for '21, '22, actual results being our audited results, our adopted budget for FY23 was looking at going from about a 14.8% of reserve down to 12.67%. So in other words, around 32 million, 32 and a half million, 27 and a half million. Based upon our audited results for FY22, we've adjusted our starting point, and that's all that we adjusted was our starting point to reflect that. So our starting point now is at 32,521,899. We're still looking at a decline in our budget over the year, but it now only declines to about 13.7%. Now again, this is not the revised budget. This is just saying, now we have our audited results, we're plugging that number in the actuals to the starting point for our adopted. When we come back with our revised, we'll start considering, we have different staff in place than what we thought we would have. You know, you have turnover with those staff. We have vacancies. We have subpositions. We have a lot of different things that occur that may impact our adopted budget, and we'll try to dial that in for what that looks like for next year as well, our new starting point. Dr. Battle really has already reviewed a lot of the 191 specifics. I will point out again, the cross subsidies and the different areas would be very helpful to our district. But the enrollment considerations is the one that is, one we're going to pay close attention to. Every one of our grades, except for kindergarten, was above projection this year. Kindergarten was down. So what, you got a foot on the brake and a foot on the gas at the same time here kind of going on. So we're stable from where we were last year. So our projected decline didn't occur. That rolled forward into our local levy. But now we're going to have to pay close attention. Is the decline in kindergarten going to continue as the birth rates indicate that they would? The other side of it is, will we continue to attract young families and students for our other grade levels as we have? I'm not going to be overly conservative, but I'm not going to be overly aggressive either in estimating that until we get some trend data over time. And that is just pretty much the summary at this point in time.
That concludes our report, and we'll take questions.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you. Next, we will have our student representative report with Ava Dravnik.
Hello, everybody. So at this time of the year, we're approaching our winter break pretty soon, and with that, Student Council is actually starting to plan Snow Week now. So that's going to run from January 28th through February 4th. So it's a little, it's far away, but it gives us a lot of time to get it all smoothed out now. And that'll end with a neon dance, and that's normal. That happens every year, and that's always a fun thing. It's a lot more relaxed than homecoming or prom per se. And it's a fun way to bring some energy mid-year back to people, and students can form teams. So they'll play against other teams and various activities through the week. And that's like volleyball, dodgeball, boot hockey, and then bingo will happen during the lunches. So that's always fun. It's actually hard to, people don't even want to leave. They want to stay in all the lunches and play bingo, which is a problem we're tackling this year. If people, to get people more involved this year, we might do two separate brackets so like, so people can match the level of competition that they're like going for with Snow Week, you know? If we have some people who are really looking to get at it, then they can be in one bracket versus some people who maybe just want to have a more lax Snow Week experience, they can be in the other bracket. So every, we can get more people involved that way, because sometimes it gets a little bit, you know, it's kind of singled down, and that always ends up getting weeded out anyway. So hopefully that'll help. And speaking of the chilly weather, Burnsville Strong had a winter clothing drive which ran for about three weeks last month. I don't have much quantitative data on that for you guys, but all of it's going to go to the Blaze Nation Station, which is at the high school, which that'll just nice there for anybody who needs it in the building. And then in other cozy news, the Youth Service Advisory Council, they made those blankets. That was just about probably a few weeks ago, and they made 10 of those, and those are going to a national group who provides like bed frames. They make the bed frames and then beds for like children who need them, and they made 10 blankets for them to donate with it. So that's nice. And then in terms of our other groups helping the communities, they've been all about it. But some groups are focused more on just keeping the communities together. So that's like our affinity groups right now. They're most, they're mostly just working with one another to foster more empowering environments that allow people to feel comfortable voicing their opinions. So both ASA and BSU right now, that's more of their focus, just kind of keeping those groups tight and even welcoming in the new people. So they're doing a lot of team bonding stuff, like ASA is doing a board game day. So that's fun for them. And BSU, they're still doing some of their like after-school help sessions with teachers, like tutoring sessions, and the same ideology follows for our LGBTQ+ group or GSA. And then I just want to talk a little about NHS and how successful the blood drive was. So they got 82 pints, which is pretty much equivalent to helping 246 people. So the number, the members of NHS are consistently volunteering within the community because they have to get 20 hours of service throughout the year. And a lot of them do that by either participating in the various clubs like the Burnsville Strong, and even NHS offers a few just specific volunteering like the blood drive. But a lot of them also help with Brain Power in a Backpack, and even right here at Diamondhead with the food pantry, or spending time in the elementary schools after the school to just help get the kids out at the end of the day, and even BYC or similar programs. It's nice to see people giving back to the community that many of us grew up in. So it's, especially at the elementary school level, it's fun. Apart from the clubs, as far as our sports teams go, we've had wrestling, that's been, they're in, they're pretty much in their season now. They even had their first tournament where they finished fifth as a team. That was in Edina. And then girls hockey, they're doing awesome with their, even with the combination, they're figuring things out. They've won four out of their six games that they've played, and they're actually playing right now at Lakeville South, so hopefully they've got another win. And the boys hockey team, which is Apple Valley combo now, they've only won one of three games, but you know, I'm sure they'll make it up for the rest of the season. And boys volleyball, which are, they're a newer team to Burnsville, they're having their opening gyms starting soon. So that's exciting just to try and get more people involved in that. And yeah, we have awesome student athletes, but at the end of the day, student comes first. So the school district is still working on the profile of a learner, which has helped all of our student, which will, the hope is to help all of our students be more successful through high school and also for whatever holds in store after that for them. So as Dr. Battle and I have both briefly touched on, there was a large forum with local business people, teachers, community leaders, and students got the opportunity to dive into what being a future-ready student would really look like. That was in late September, but at the end of November, six other students and myself participated in another more brief virtual forum, again, to go over pretty much the same questions, just to get more student perspective on that. So we just went over what it would actually look like to be future-ready. So this is like financial literacy, being civic-minded, and life after high school, and we also, what it would be like to be workplace-ready. So most of the things that we chatted about were like, you know, good time management skills, being able to actually articulate your thoughts, communicating well with others, even how to, you know, improve your credit score and what a credit score is. So things like that. And hopefully by the end of next, or hopefully for next school year, a lot of the things can be implemented in to hopefully blaze a brighter everlasting path for high school students from Burnsville. That's all I've got for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. I don't know if we asked for questions or comments, but it was, it's always great to hear the many different things, and it's so well-rounded in terms of student service, volunteerism, athletics, clubs. I mean, it, he gave a real whole perspective of what's happening at the, at our, at our high school, and that's really appreciated. Thank you. Next, we will have a report from our superintendent, Dr. Teresa Battle.
Thank you Chair Chester and members of the board. Tonight, I want to talk about a couple of pathways-related stories, one of which I was fortunate enough to experience personally. So yesterday, I served as a judge for the Second Annual Burnsville Youth Collaborative Cook-Off. As part of the after-school middle school program, and thanks to partnership with the University of Minnesota's Cooking Matters Program, our students are learning a variety of skills to use in the kitchen, and it culminates with a cooking competition. It also involves integrating mathematics and measuring. So in addition to learning about nutritious and healthy foods, they do practice some mathematics. This is the kind of experience that can open their eyes to what's possible in their futures. Maybe they just learn cooking skills that are useful for anyone, but maybe they're inspired to learn more and even pursue being a chef or culinary arts in the future or in that particular industry. And if that's what they choose, they can look forward to become part of the amazing culinary arts pathway at Burnsville High School. Just recently, those Burnsville High School students, culinary students, participated in the Star Tribune's Open to Everyone in the State of Minnesota Annual Holiday Cookie Contest, which is organized by former Star Tribune writer and our own Burnsville High School graduate Rick Nelson. Our students worked with professional chefs to test the top cookie contenders, and our own senior Lily Banisik participated on the judging panel. These are the things that are the essence of our pathways models. Partnerships that create opportunities and remove barriers to spark our students' passions and prepare them for the future. So I really want to thank our amazing community education staff in our schools, including culinary arts teacher Matt Deutsch, as well as our amazing community partners who make these unique experiences possible. And these are the things that make me proud to be superintendent and a part of this 191 community. Thank you. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Now we will have board member reports. This is not the committee reports time, that's next meeting, but if there are other board reports, now's the time. Seeing none, we will move to recognize Director Sue Said. So we're going to take a moment to recognize one of our amazing colleagues who will be leaving our board this year. First being appointed in January of 2021, and then being elected that year to fill a vacancy. You've really stepped up to offer your time and knowledge and perspective as a member of this board. And as a former student of 191 and now a parent of students, you've brought a unique history and experience to this team. And your focus of ensuring we live up to our goals and values of ensuring we provide equitable education for all students has been greatly appreciated. And to say thanks, we would love to offer you this small token of board service, it's a bell. From us as a board at District 191 and how incredibly grateful we are. And I don't know, I would have to say, out of all of us going through this election experience, yours has been the most grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, let's all get it. Tony, Tony. We know that even though you won't be at the board table, we know you'll be involved in. Oh, yeah, that's what the bell's for. A comeback, guys. Okay, that concludes our informational portion of our meeting. We will now move on to our business portion, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it's generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do we have any, does anyone wish to move anything out of the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt, seconded by Director Hume. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving to new business, we are being asked to approve an application for preliminary approval of an extended field trip to France, Monaco, and Italy. We have Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Sarah Holcomb.
Good evening Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, and members of the Board of Education. Ms. Holcomb couldn't be here this evening, so I'm presenting on behalf of her. And I am presenting an application for an extended field trip for Burnsville High School World Language students to hopefully travel to France, Monaco, and Italy from June 12th to June 23rd, 2023. The objective is to apply knowledge of language and culture to real-life situations. The program, as I referenced, is planned to be 12 days in scope. If approved, the teacher will go forward and recruit, or Ms. Holcomb will go forward, recruit students, communicate with families, and insist on an inclusive process that includes access without personal financial barriers.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Moved by Director Said.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? Director Hume.
I just see the price of this per student is over $5,000, and would just like to better understand, I assume the students are paying, students and their families are paying this and not the district, but can we talk a little bit about how that's being funded?
Yeah, you're correct with your assumption that it's not going to be district-funded. I, in my understanding, working with the teacher, they do have a zero-impact goal though through fundraising, so I don't know all of those fundraising efforts. I know they're partnering with some other organizations in the hopes that they can begin fundraising.
Okay.
I have to ask that question.
Director Alt?
That was one of my questions. Thank you, Director Hume. Also, can you explain how adult fares are paid for?
That's a great question that I don't know the answer to.
So if I could, typically, when a field trip is presented to the board, the teacher that's supervising that field trip is present so that they can answer those questions.
Sounds good. So I think what we'll do is, I know Ms. Holcomb had a different professional obligation, I forget which sport or activity, and she did sure she could find coverage if we scheduled for a later date, maybe early January, first meeting in January.
So it's, so it's what is being asked to withhold the approval, or?
I'm not sure.
No, I'm just saying for future. Understood? You know, this is kind of new for this administration.
Yes.
I'm just saying, I'm saying for future.
Okay.
It's, it's most typical for the teacher to be there with the administrator to present so that those questions can be answered.
Oh, thank you, Director Alt.
I'm not saying it's going to withhold. Speaking for myself, it's not going to withhold anything, but.
Yes. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you. Director Webb?
What, is there going to be some sort of like, um, opportunity for, uh, scholarship or, you know, because if you're treating everyone the same, every, everyone should have the opportunity to go, but yet if somebody can't afford it, what are, what are their options?
So that's a, so that is a scenario that would need to be, um, part of the negotiations with the fundraising and the tour firm that the teacher is, is entering into an agreement with, so, to make sure that doesn't, that scenario doesn't occur.
If I may, um, you know, with other organizations not directly related to the school, um, sports for instance, or band or, or whatever, typically there's a fundraising, um, series, a schedule of events that occur, selling things, running a raffle, et cetera, um, and those are shared returns to the group, so I don't know that there would be an individual student that wouldn't, uh, somehow be unequally receiving of the return, the question would be whether they raise enough funds to cover all participants, that, that would be the hope, and I, I, I think we need to stress that pretty strongly from the board seat here, that that, uh, that would be the, the expectation of something we approve of this nature, that, that, then there is leadership either from the teacher or from the administration to organize, uh, you know, fundraising efforts to, to bring the, to make it a zero-dollar event for the students. Um, I see that it, it, under educational objective, give French students the opportunity, so this is restricted only to those taking French class?
Her class and 10 students, it looks like, so it's 10 students.
What's that?
It's only 10.
Estimated number is two chaperones of 10 students, but for, I mean, not every French taking, student taking French would have to go, but I'm assuming that someone not taking French would not be eligible to attend this because this is a related to French class. Is, can you verify that or?
I think the, um, the recruitment efforts will originate in Fr- in French class, but I think it's up to, so the contest, context is really that, that world language experience in trying to provide students an opportunity for that real-life space, so, um, in having conversations with Ms. Holcomb prior to this, I didn't get the impression that that was limited exclusively to French students, although that is what she teaches.
Yep. Um, what is the outside, uh, tour organization that we're utilizing for this?
Global. Don't have that information.
Okay, uh, and then some of them, some of them I know do offer, uh, scholarship opportunities on a needs-based, uh, basis also. Um, so the, I believe the process for this by policy is that, uh, what we're doing here today is a preliminary, uh, approval which will authorize and allow, uh, Ms. Holcomb to announce the trip, um, put out feelers for people to get involved in it, um, and, and engage them. Um, I would hope that this returns to the table at a closer to date, 60 days, what, what is it?
60 or 90 days.
There's a, there is an actual policy obligation to get approval from the board before, um, before the trip is to commence, uh, final approval so to speak, so I think some of those concerns we can reevaluate at that time.
Yeah, we'll know more about the fundraising and all that too.
It is a short period of time to be raising a fair amount of money.
Yes.
Typically something of this nature, in my experience, it takes about a year to raise the money.
Over $50,000.
And having answers to those questions following the meeting would be, would be helpful.
I'll seek those out.
Great, any other questions, discussion?
Well, I guess my one, building on what you just mentioned, if we, the board has to do a formal final approval, I think it would be important to check with the organization that the teacher is working with to see what their deadlines are, because I would hate for us to be in a position where we're, for some reason, not able to approve something, but a deadline has passed and they lose their deposits.
Yeah.
Working in international education, that happens.
Thank you for that.
That's good to know. Great, um, any other, no, seeing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Um, next we are being asked to adopt a resolution approving associate membership with Southwest Metro Intermediate District 288. We have Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services.
Hi, good evening, uh, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for having me, I am here, um, very excited to talk with you about the associate membership with Southwest Metro Intermediate School District 288. Um, as you know, districts around have really been struggling with staffing and, um, District, Intermediate School District 917 is no different. The impact with our students in our district is that, um, we are not able to find the space for the services that they require in order to receive their special education services. This associate membership would provide us, um, the opportunity to have another option for our students in our district. Um, so my recommendation is that we adopt the resolution approving the associate membership for Southwest Metro Intermediate School District 288 to begin on July 1st, 2023.
Great, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Director Webb?
Second.
Second by Director Alt, any discussion questions? Director Alt?
Just a comment, thank you very much for, um, for the legwork you've done and the research to really make sure that we're doing the best to, to support our special ed students, really appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Director Miller?
I would like to echo that, I know this has been a, um, a race to fill a, a, a hole in the, the hull of the boat, and so I appreciate the work you've done. As we talked about previously, I encourage us to, um, stay vocal and transparent about this issue, um, because this is quite frankly a patch, um, should have been a solution in the first place, uh, so if, you know, if that becomes a larger looming problem, I'd like us to be, um, open to exploring alternatives.
You bet.
You know, we have property and buildings available in this district we could utilize if we wanted to bring some of this stuff in-house.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, next we are being asked to approve the proposal of, for the 2023 Kitchen and Cafeteria Alterations Project at Nicollet Middle School. We have Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening again. I'm bringing to you a recommendation, um, under our long-term facility maintenance of, uh, funding of close to a million dollars to update equipment that we have in the kitchen at Nicollet Middle School, not only re-updating equipment, um, we're also doing some redesign in the area. We're hoping by, uh, doing this process, we'll also be able to reduce one of the periods that we need for lunch, which helps for our instructional schedules, it helps, uh, for efficiencies as far as the amount of labor hours that are needed to, to, to process and get all the meals served. Um, and also, who knew, uh, dishwashers are very similar to NASA computers, I mean, they get smaller over time. Um, so one of the spaces that we currently have our dishwasher in is, is a very large area, they will be able to convert that area to storage to get a lot of the items that have been stored in the hallway into that area and then use a smaller dishwasher and relocate that, so we also have some safety things that we're able to address with this at the same time. So with that, it is my recommendation, at the Board of Education, approve the bid results and proposal from Weber Incorporated in the amount of $986,000, $986 and $5,000, five, I mean, slow down, $986,000, stop saying dollars, $986,000 and $500 for the Kitchen and Cafeteria Alterations Project at Nicollet Middle School.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve this proposal?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Said. Um, any discussion or questions?
I just have one.
Director Hume?
Question that is addressed in the very end of the background paper, but I would just like to reconfirm the amount of time it's expected that this project would take. It says during the summer of 2023, so we would expect that if things go as planned, it would be completed by the start of school, and we are, what about supply chain issues, are we ahead of the game on that? I guess I have two questions.
Yep.
Yes, but the one, we just accepted the bid, so you know the purchasing going out now and getting the equipment ordered and everything else starts to fall in place. Uh, some of the legwork has been done as far as the architectural designs, working towards the permits and such. That's about the best I have for that. So yes, we do, we do anticipate that we'll be able to turn this fairly quickly though.
Wonderful, thank you.
I have a question.
Director Webb?
So you'd mentioned that this would impact the lunches at Nicollet? So right now they have three, so it'll go down to two or what, what, how is that going to, how will it impact the, the lunches is what I'm curious about.
My understanding is that they had more than three.
Oh, my son goes there, so I'm just trying to figure out what, how that will change it for.
I actually thought they were going from a number that was closer to five down to four, but I'll verify that information, that's what I was hearing, so.
Oh, okay, I don't know, it's very confused, it, the, the lunch situation, all I know is it's very chaotic.
Yes, we, we are working on the, the, the flow, if you will, as well.
Okay, so you think it's from five to four?
That's what I understand from David Lake, I can verify that also with Julie.
Okay.
With the, the principal over there.
Okay, will that impact any of the, um, class scheduling at all, or do we just impact it just having less lunches?
Less interruptions, so you won't have the, uh, a class period that's interrupted maybe once or twice to, to go through this.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions, comments, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next we are being asked to approve final certification of property tax levy payable in 2023, Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
As we went through the process earlier with our truth and taxation, uh, meeting, at this point, we are bringing the recommendation that the Board of Education certify the final property tax levy for taxes payable in 2023 of $49,070,653.49 as presented. There is a breakdown for the different funding areas, uh, that, and the amount that would feed into that, all totaling up again to just over $49 million. The final levy recommended for approval this evening is in the amount of $49,070,653.49. This represents the district's maximum levy authority and reflects an 18.53% increase from the payable 2022 property tax levy. The certified levy funds the fiscal year of 2023, 2024. I do recommend the approval of the final levy.
Do I have a motion to approve the final levy?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Second by Director Miller, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Um, next we are being asked to adopt a resolution combining precincts for school district elections. Uh, again, we have Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Um, it's my understanding that every December, no later than December of the previous, uh, voting year, uh, local precincts, local jurisdictions need to, um, vote and identify what the combined precincts would be for the following election if we were to hold a special election upcoming, we need to do that by the end of this calendar year. So this is, we're, we're just setting aside that, yes, we will be combining precincts, not that we are taking a vote or bringing up a vote, but we have to be prepared, that's what this is for. It is the recommendation that the Board adopts a resolution establishing combined polling places for certain multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Webb, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Um, next we're ba- um, being asked to approve on a first reading basis changes to policies 416, drug and alcohol testing, 417, chemical use and abuse, 708, transportation of non-public school students, 709, transfer, student transportation safety policy, and 721, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources, and we have Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
I believe this is my last one for the night.
It is.
Um, I am bringing to you a number of policies and the changes that are, uh, brought forward within these policies are all MSBA recommendations, we did not change any of the recommendations that came to us from MSBA, um, they did go through the Policy Review Committee in the November 22nd, and we're bringing them forward at this point in time.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve these policies on a first reading basis?
So, go ahead.
Moved by Director Miller, second by Director Hume, um, do I have any, um, questions, discussion? Any questions or discussion regarding the first reading policies? Nope, um, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, uh, motion carries unanimously, oh wait, opposed, nobody, there we go, now it's a carry unanimously. We are being also asked to approve on a first reading basis changes to policies 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school, and we have Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening again. Um, I'm just asking our, uh, I'm asking our board to approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 418, drug-free workplace and drug-free school. Um, this policy also went through the Policy Review Committee, uh, it features updates to MSBA language.
Can, can we pause for just a moment, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay, does she have transportation again? All right, thank you. Please continue.
Start from the beginning, um, I'm just, uh, I'm here to ask the, our, our board to approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 418, drug-free workplace and drug-free school. This policy also went through the Policy Review Committee, uh, it features updates to MSBA language.
Can, can we pause for just a moment, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay, does she have transportation again? All right, thank you. Please continue.
Start from the beginning, um, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm here to ask the, our, our board to approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 418, drug-free workplace and drug-free school. Um, this policy 418 was reviewed by a Policy Review Committee also on November 22nd, 2022. It features, um, updated to MSBA language, um, that was due in part to changes in state and federal law. Other than that, uh, other than updating, um, to be current with the Minnesota School Board Association, um, there are no other changes for this.
Great, um, do I have a motion to approve this policy on a first read basis?
So moved.
Moved by Director Webb?
Second.
Second by Director Alt, any questions or discussion?
Just to clarify what you were saying, uh, because there is a fair amount of red lines in this, uh, but this is all driven by, uh, either state law changes or MSBA updates to language choices.
Correct, thank you for that, yeah, there, there are several revisions that you'll see, and a lot of it has to do with, um, changes in, in marijuana laws.
Defining cannibals.
How people are consuming different things.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, Dr. Belmont. Um, we are at the end of our agenda and this concludes the, um, regular meeting of the 191 Board of Education. Meeting's adjourned, we will move to a workshop, um, to review goals, review goals and self-evaluation of the school board and survey results, we'll take a five-minute break.
I can't believe being sick at somebody else's.
For me to know for the, for future reference.
I know, I don't know either.
It'd only take you eleven months to learn, right?
Yeah, we're all. When I get home, she'll be.
Oh, awesome.
She's coming to work?
Okay.
It's shadowing.
Probably. Because I waited a couple minutes, and then I went to the bathroom and talked to Lindy for a couple minutes, so it's pretty close to five minutes. Jamie might have written down what time we went to recess.
Well, you have a safe drive home, and I will text you.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, did you happen to write down what time you started our five-minute recess?
Uh, for the trip to tax?
Not right now. It's close enough.
When did I, when did we adjourn?
I think we're close. I feel like it's been at least five minutes.
Yeah, you're good.
Everybody's in the room.
No, don't worry about it.
It's fine. Another minute has passed while we looked, so now we're for sure fine.
Yeah, we're now off.
Okay, seven fifty-seven.
That's, I was gonna say eight oh one.
So, so it's been five minutes, we're good?
That's been more than two minutes.
Yeah, it hasn't been more than two, okay. Okay, we are ready to begin our workshop. Oh, then I just shut down my stuff.
Yeah, I just put the printed copy in my backpack.
Ah.
Yes, you're good.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night, good weekend.
And I just shut down my board book. It, so part of our, our gathering today is to kind of review. We did that self-eval, but we're not bringing MSBA in to do the longer retreat-type thing that we have. But this is a good, like, like, check-in point for us as a board in terms of how we're seeing ourselves in, um, in, under the MSBA guidelines. And then, so what's been included in board book was, is a reflection of the goals we adopted for ourselves, but then also the summary of the self-eval that, um, Jamie so nicely printed out, um, and gave to us. So kind of, oh, so what's in board book isn't this extensive. So what's in board book is a summary, which I kind of liked. But if we wanted to go into detail, we have the detail in print. Cause like, if we look at the summary, the, the summary document online, under the five standards that are there. Oh, I can't see anything. Okay, there we go.
One clarification.
Yes.
What she printed?
Is, is everything. So it's, it's with, it's all the answers within the five standards. So like, and then, then the summary is kind of probably the average of the responses in the, in, under each standard. So like, we have standard one, standard two.
But I think, in looking, I think what she said as she was leaving is it does not include this most recent one. It's the three we've done prior.
Oh, the three we've done prior. Got it. Yep, yep. So this is.
What's in board book is the most recent one.
What's in board book is the most recent one. Perfect. Okay.
Yes. And then this is the three previous ones that we've done.
Yep. And then, so looking at, um, just a, a quick look at, um, the aggregate data, if you will, of, um, the past four years. Where, I mean, we're doing pretty good.
That's, I think we might have done it in January of twenty twenty-two. Because, right. Because when I look at the aggregate data in the printed version.
It's three years.
It's the, the thr- it's, doesn't include the twenty twenty-two quarter four results, but the three underneath it are exactly what's in the printout.
So, so we took, so last, this calendar year, in the first quarter, we did the self-eval, and then in March, I think we had an MSBA person.
That sounds right.
Here, and then now this fall, we did quarter four, a self-eval, um, so we.
Fluke of timing, we did it twice this year.
Yeah, for the, yeah, because one is reflective of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
And the purpose of the printed is in case you wanted to know the questions that contributed to.
To the, the aggregate. Yeah.
Right.
Right, again, that we'll leave, we'll eventually leave this version, this printed one, for access to the actual report, for the current evaluation.
I mean, the detail, yeah.
Right.
So I will check. I believe MSB only provides this type of report if you have them come at another retreat.
Which we do every other year.
This is, this is the off-year. This is the off-year, so we're getting, so we're just getting the aggregate data, not the detail.
So this is the report that we were probably given, if we checked, this is probably what we're giving back in January.
So this is what, this is what MSBA did with us in March. But now, now comparing.
We did the less, because we're alternating every other year, the shorter one and the more detailed with the facility.
So if you're, you know, if you're in board book and looking at the aggregate data thing, um, and we're looking at the, maybe the first two rows, that's from this past spring and current. So the top one is what we just did in terms of our self-eval. Um, and in looking at that data, uh, we're seeing that, um, what is it? Uh, ninety-one percent of us reported that we either most of the time or always meet this standard. Um, comparative to in the spring, um, we were at eighty-six percent. So that's pretty good, um, in terms of our work together and really starting to understand all the pieces. We were able to rate ourselves a little better. Um, standard two overview of vision, and that was code, conduct and ethics. Uh, standard two is vision in terms of communication and, and high expectations for learning and having clear goals and plans. This eval, we rated our, we rated ourselves as, uh, most of the time are always, or seeing that this is reflective in the district, most of the time, are always at ninety-six percent. Um, and previously, it was eighty-nine percent, so from the spring. So in terms of like, nine months of difference. For standard three, uh, structure creating conditions statewide for student-staff success. Um, we, we rated ourselves a little, like, really differently. Yeah. Not, I mean, yeah.
Ninety-six percent of us chose to rate in those categories. That's what this is saying. This, and this is aggregate data again.
Yeah. It's like rating our, how we feel we.
A number of questions we didn't set this, but, um, we, I would phrase it as sort of, like, for standard two, ninety-six, I would say ninety-six selected to choose either always or most of the time.
Yeah, that we meet those.
And just a plus, of the responses from that category.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to be clear, this is, I just, you know, it sounds pushing, you know, we, we don't want to say that we collectively felt that way, because there are outliers, there are clearly the places where some people disagreed with that.
Oh, sure. Right. And then, standard three, um, was a bit different, um, in terms of, we are seeing ratings, um, increase in some of the time responses, but being somewhat consistent and never or don't know, so there's still some, um, room for maybe more knowledge or better understanding, um, in, under the, this area. And I, and not knowing, because we don't have necessarily the detail under that, which one of those questions or scenarios does that mean?
Are we doing conversations and comments as we go?
Yes.
Because I wonder, seeing that, seeing that there's still some that either don't know or don't think we do certain things. We did recently make a decision to invite our school building principals to come to our meetings to start sharing more of this exact type of information. So my hope would be that over the coming year, the board will feel more confident in their answers and ha- will have fewer, at least of the I-don't-knows as time goes on, if we, if we are able to more proactively share more of that information from our building leaders that we've begun doing this fall.
Well, and I think for myself, um, the anticipation of the profile of a learner and the profile of an employee might have impacted my responses to this, that it's like, okay, we're gonna be getting, um, data soon in both of those areas. I don't know what I don't know.
It's fair.
Well, and, and a lot of this regarding structures related into policies and, and hiring and retention, and, and these are things that we're still grappling with or trying to grapple with our knowledge, so maybe. I mean, and in the, and it looks like in the past historically, we've had some areas of questioning there of not knowing for sure or unsure.
Over time, the knowledge, our, um, our reflection on the knowledge that we have in this area seems to have improved, and there's still a little more that we probably could learn.
Right.
If this section continues, persists to be longer, we have some challenges for, for, let's say, students. I think that, given the nature, I mean, again, challenges without having, you know, some, but given those, the sort of overwhelming nature of the questions, I would suggest that, you know, Dr. Riley, you, you mentioned, keep us abreast of, you know, things that are occurring for future retention and hiring and, uh, evaluation of the district, and transfer share and budget crisis and all of that, because I think that's what's probably bleeding through on this, is some feedback from the board people. Feel like, some, some part of some question of all this, there was, there must be some feeling of not knowing or not feeling, there's nothing. It's best we can do is not know. Sort of evaluate the overall sausage, and just don't know the pieces one by one.
I, I asked the question, so.
Yeah. I mean, and, and it also kind of depends on, um, the frame or lens that we're analyzing that question too. You know, because it's like, I think, I think even when I look at some of these questions, it's like, I think of like, is it true for every single student? You know, like, if I think of special ed, is it really reflective for special ed? Then I, then it's like, well, no, I don't know.
And there's not a lot of nuance in the questions.
And then, so I'm probably reading more into the question, you know, or am I not? You know, I don't know. And, and they, and you don't get really a box to ask another question outside of writing. So, um, I think, I, I would, if, if we, when we do this again, I would love the opportunity for us to like, take notes to like, kind of talk about maybe our thoughts when we were responding to some of those questions, like, if we had a, a question in our head that's leading us to go, well, no, I'm not as sure about this one. Like, in my gut, it says this, but now thinking this way, I'm not sure. Um, so then I'm gonna change my response.
What questions did, did we slow down on?
Yeah, because then that might.
Can I ask you to remind me of that in about eight months?
Yeah. Write a note.
Well, too, we'll have, uh, we'll have a new body and, um, probably will be really helpful to review, well, someone's done walk through her, because, because otherwise, you know, she might very well be challenged. So I don't, I don't know enough yet. I haven't seen her enough to know.
Which is how I responded as a new board member when we did it the first time.
Well, it was interesting to me, actually, because that first year, twenty-nine Q four, was the end of our first year on the board, and there, some of the responses are very different.
Yep.
Given, like, there was a lot of I-don't-knows in that first year, where there were three of the seven members were in their very first year on the board.
Yep. I have no idea. Been on long enough to know.
Well, and arguably.
And twenty.
Same in, well, same in, uh, twenty, the Q one, twenty twenty-two, I guess, because that would have been the end of their first year, yeah.
Yep.
When we also had three new board members.
Right. And then, kind of looking at standard four, which is accountability, um, holding the school district accountable for meeting , uh, student learning expectations. We, it looks like we're, we're still fairly, um, close to what we rated ourselves in the spring. But we had, um, it's hard to tell, but it looks like maybe a percentage that indicated never in a couple of responses, and so again, it, it's hard without really understanding what, you know, because there's so many questions under each standard, what one of those might have.
And I think it says one percent, so it might be one never out of ten questions, right?
Might have been one question, yeah.
The one person, and so, but it's hard to know what the context was.
So one that stood out for me was there's a question about follow a schedule for the timely review of the strategic plan. So I don't think we actually know the benchmarks, so maybe that's something you may want to set for that one, that.
Well, it's in the plan itself. It's in the plan itself, but in terms of, for the update. But in terms of a review, the annual discussion.
So I was just curious about that question.
Yeah.
A schedule.
Yeah. Or, yeah, and then evaluate and adjust resources.
And we review the strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. I mean, and some of those have prompted our, some of our, our goals are setting goals we're talking about too. So. And then the last standard advocacy and communication, again, where the, the rating was fairly close to this past spring with still some of, some people rate, you know, some of the ratings for the questions being some of the time. But a lot of the responses were most of the time or always. Again, greater more of the most of the time. So I don't know if there's, it, it's interesting when it fluctuates where most of the time grows and always shrinks. So, but you don't know again, what we're thinking or why, or is it because we learned or saw something that prompted that response?
But they're, they're close enough.
Yeah.
Right? That.
Yeah.
It's not like it's a huge difference one way or the other. A couple of percentage wins.
It's kind of like on performance reviews. I never give a five. You know, I'm always a four. So.
Sorry, Tracy. Now she knows.
Me and my other staff. Even my own self eval, I give myself a five. And you know, and maybe that's reflective too. Who knows? But anybody's thoughts or, or comments on our, on this evaluation of ourselves as a board and, and kind of where we are assessing our knowledge under these standards? It was, I think, personally, I think it was good to see that the, the don't knows or nevers didn't increase necessarily. That we had more consistent in that blue and green area, but never realized the value of having the other questions.
Right.
Hard to compare with just the aggregate. But, so that, that's just from MSBA. I'm wondering if it's good for us to take the time to do kind of a mid-year of the goals, our smart goals as a board and kind of just review them and kind of maybe talk about how we're feeling or where we're at or how we perceive we're at. So this is also, we set those in alignment with the strategic roadmap and the district values. Our goal one is cultural proficiency. So before June, all board members will understand and be able to articulate the district's work in being a culturally proficient school system. Work to understand how CPS, CPSS is reflected in our district and a plan for further implementation. Measures where board members will participate in a facilitator retreat. I think that is forthcoming. Board members will receive information from cultural liaisons and other appropriate representatives as part of, from the school reports. I'm not sure if I've seen that in the recent ones. So far, yeah. So, cause I think we had heard just from the high school and the middle schools.
Right.
Yeah. Any thoughts on kind of how we feel we're at there? I think it's where it will, we use traction at work. So if it's on track or off track. I would say it's, it's potentially on track with timing, you know, with it coming forward. Maybe.
We've not had a retreat yet.
Yeah.
And we've not received information from cultural liaisons, but this is why it's good to have this conversation now as a reminder of things that we identified as priorities.
Well, and I there was, there was intentionality with some of that timing, I think. Because we knew the election was coming up.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we wanted to wait, I think, until we knew who the new board was gonna be. Exactly. For sure. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't criticizing that. Oh, it's more that. Yeah. It's a good reminder that it should be on the radar though.
I, yeah, I mean, it's, it's like we have the, the, the date set in the goal, but like maybe under the measures, just a reminder going, you set that in March, you know? Nice reminder. It's like, oh yeah, that's forthcoming. Goal two, supporting and leveraging new methods of origin and original thinking to improve student outcomes. That board members will understand and be able to articulate our pathways K twelve program and use it to inform setting district priorities. And so we want to have a deeper understanding of how the K twelve pathways program is reflected in our district, especially within our elementary schools and seeing that we haven't begun the elementary reports yet. We look forward to the January meeting. It, no, it was, it was, it was in the, it was in the middle school, but our emphasis is looking at the, the K five, pre K five. And then board members will participate in a dedicated workshop to have a deep dive into the progress of pathways. I think, believe that's forthcoming too. Board members, a lot to track. Board members will receive reflections of pathways as part of school reports starting in January. Board members will receive dashboard reports which reflect the district's progress in meeting our pathway schools. And I think that's usually covered in the spring too. So.
No, we're gonna, remember, we're gonna present the dashboard in January.
January, yes.
January's gonna be busy.
Usually is.
Yes. Then, so those are all forthcoming too. So there's not much we can do. Goal three, creating space and opportunity for each and every voice to be heard. As a district, it is responsibility of the one ninety one Board of Education to be transparent with our community and receive community input to inform decision making. I believe that's an active. Seek input from multiple voices, family, staff and community that represent, represent the full diversity of our communities in order to inform our decisions and be transparent in its communication. Board members will ensure members of the community have opportunities to provide input regarding activities. Budgeting is only one example through community activity gatherings and surveys. We've had two examples of that this week. Board members will learn how information is getting to our families and staff, identify any gaps and have staff work to resolve those gaps. And board members will understand which voices are represented in surveys and identify voices missing to learn and plan for, to reach them. I think we've done a lot, work here for sure. It's gonna continue.
I don't know if we've had any surveys in the last few months.
Not surveys.
Have we?
I don't think.
I think we're doing much better with, with engaging, you know, Dr. Battle's efforts and her team to engage. And I think our continuing, as the board continues to reiterate that and encourage and in our conversations with people when we're out and about, you know, make sure that people know the process by which they can communicate with us and, and with Dr. Battle.
So. What do y'all think?
Seems like we're on the right track.
I think so. I think so. More to, a lot more to come. Work's not dull. Soon it's like I got one meeting left.
Got my bell.
Ringing that bell. She's Alice. Exactly.
If we don't have any other items here, I think, I think we had a good review and I, I like the idea of having a mid-year review of our goals kind of as a reminder, cause it's like, oh yeah, we said we were gonna do that.
Appreciate that, cause it's very easy to write goals and then never look at them again.
Oh, yeah. I've seen many strategic plan on a book show.
Yes.
And then just a reminder for members who are continuing on after January. If you're thinking of wanting to be an officer, usually it's around this time of the year or the first part of January where you kind of give a notice to the rest of the board you are wanting or considering wanting an officer spot so that when it comes time for that part, which is like the second meeting in January. Is it the first meeting? First meeting in January.
Organizational meeting.
Um, then that goes on to, to, then somebody will nominate you for the officer position you're interested in. There's a vote and then the seats all rotate at that meeting. So if there's an interest, let, put out a, a notice to the board saying you're interested in this officer position. And then let me know too, and we can work on figuring out who's nominating who for what. And then I think after that, it's committees. If you're interested in serving in committees too.
Do that at the organizational meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's after.
It's the second.
We start, you talk about it.
We start talking and gathering information and then the assignments happen the second meeting in January. So, yeah.
And one thought, in terms of doing that mid-year review of our goals, someone might want to make a note that when we review the board planning document in August, that's something that we could put in for December.
Yes. Well, add it to the board planning document.
Add it to the board planning document in August.
Mid-year goal check-in.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay.
Good, good suggestion.
We're still on. Okay.
Light's still on.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.